Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming to the special meeting for the interim city manager on Tuesday, February 10th, 2015. Would you please stand for the invocation followed by the president. Dear the fathers we gather tonight to do the city's will, we ask that you watch over us and guide us. Give us the words and the interpretation, Lord, that we can move this city forward. We ask that you guide us through our decisions tonight and watch over us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
One witness to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Councilmember Cuthbert.
Councilmember Shai.
Here.
Councilmember Lalo.
Here.
Mayor Gunnerson.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
All present. Next, I'll ask for motion support. Bring the agenda. Put away the agenda.
So moved.
So far.
Any discussion? Here now, call for vote.
Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Shai.
Yes.
Mr. Lalo.
Yes.
Mr. Gunnerson.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Agenda passed. Five oh is presented. Next, moving into the interviews for the interim city manager position. What we've done in the past has worked really well. We have a series of questions that are set up. We will ask candidates come up. And we have Bruce Brown first at seven o'clock and then Ree Charles at eight. Kareem Thomas, our city clerk, will be reading these questions. We've tried this in the past, as in they do with reading these questions, and we noticed that between maybe with the presentation or whatever, with one person doing them, it just seems to be more even across the board. So what we will do is have the interview questions read and then we are able to follow with immediate answers for those. At this time, I would ask Bruce Brown to come up.
This is a hot seat?
Yes.
This one is weird.
Yes. We all have footprints of this occurrence. This time, we'd like to start your -- Mr. Brown. Kareem, if you could please start with question number.
Please tell us more about yourself from a personal perspective.
Well, I was born in Lansing, Michigan. Attended Michigan State, met my wife there. And we have two children. One lives in Connecticut and one lives in Kentwood. I got a master's degree in city planning. And my goal was to be a city planning director by the time I was 28. I was one by the time I was 25. But then I began a series of career steps that weren't necessarily planned. It just seemed that one thing led to another and I ended up in public life for a number of years as a funding director, economic development director. I did an economic development attraction in Indianapolis. That was a public-private joint venture between the city, the state, Lily and Dowment. Indianapolis is a city that is a rather faraway city in the United States and people don't stop there very often, except for the 500 mile race. And so the governor and the mayor asked if I would take a look at what we could do to overcome that. And I created Wasona's Boulevard Park in downtown Indianapolis, 256 acres, as a football stadium and museums, et cetera, et cetera. I was city manager of Kalamazoo for a while. And then I went into the private sector. I have always been interested in real estate, real estate development. And I worked for a couple of different real estate companies. I was approached by the owner of a home building company in Chicago. They wanted to open a Michigan operation. And I agreed to do that. I worked for him for 11 years. And then my wife and I decided to go out on our own. We created a home building company and for 10 years in the Grand Rapids area, we built homes, condominiums, and subdivisions. And then 2007 came along and the housing industry hit the wall. And I sold my company and closed out everything with the banks. And was actually building my granddaughter a dollhouse in 2008 when I got a call from a friend of mine who was on the city council in Port Huron. They had just fired the city manager and they needed somebody to come over for a couple of months. I ended up lasting for six years there. And we made, as I was telling Kareem, we made some significant changes. The city was in deep trouble. It had a 26 percent unemployment rate. It had a 49 percent vacancy rate in its industrial park. Its downtown was dead. There was no development going on. The last new home built in Port Huron had been built 25 years before I got there. And so over the next six years, we put together a number of things, basically bringing people that can do things together better than individually. And we were able to make major accomplishments. The unemployment rate went from 26 to 11 percent while I was in there. The vacancy rate was 90 percent in our industrial park when I left. And so we spent a great deal of time there. My agreement with the city council was that I was interim. They ended up naming me a city manager, but I always felt kind of interim because they were like one-year contracts. But we had a great time together. I agreed to help recruit my replacement. And we did that. James Freed, somebody you may know from this area, became city manager in June of this last year. City council asked me to stay on for a month and a half and help him through the transition. As I indicated, within two weeks, I could tell I was cramping his style because people would come in to the office and they'd come see me other than him. And so I met with the mayor and said, I think it's time for us to do something different. So my wife and I moved back to Grand Rapids in September. And since that time, I've had a plethora of opportunities. I worked with the city of Ludington, who was interested in a convention center. I built a convention center in Port Huron and restored a hotel that was six months from going dark. And I had the pleasure or displeasure of telling them that a convention center was not going to work in Ludington. So we saved them some money, hopefully. I am currently informally helping the city of Muskegon on a convention center. City of Kentwood contacted me a month or so ago and were interested in developing a technology park in their city. And I have also been working for an organization in Muskegon, helping them with a long-range physical development plan for their property. It's an organization that's 79 years old and needs to be brought into the 20th century. In the process, I'm working on the organizational structure moving forward. I'm almost finished with that. So that's a long-winded explanation of what I think you're looking for.
All right. Thank you.
Please describe your human interaction skills and how you will establish your credibility with the mayor and council, staff, and citizens.
I think one of my strengths is bringing people together. When I moved into my office in Port Huron, I asked my staff, how are your relations with the county? And they said, we hate the county and the county hates us. And we were two blocks apart as far as our buildings were concerned. I immediately called the county supervisor or administrator and we had lunch and began a partnership that is going strong today. We joined together to build the convention center and to restore the hotel. My staff was, as you can imagine, you walk into that kind of situation and it's uncomfortable for them. They don't know how long I'm going to be there. And I assume they've all got some agendas and some things that they are trying to accomplish. But we overcame that. We developed a very strong working relationship. I have a very informal management style. I am not the end of all truth and knowledge. And I do ask and expect that department heads, who are the end of all truth and knowledge in their particular area, run their show and run it well. I try not to get involved in what's going on in their life unless there's a problem. We had a similar situation with the townships. We had three townships in a city that surrounded the city of Port Huron. And they were always, always, always fighting, killing off each other's projects, et cetera, et cetera. And I brought the three supervisors and the city manager together for lunch and said, you know what? You are not my competition. My competition is Grand Rapids and Belton, Michigan, et cetera, et cetera. We've got to start working together. So we began meeting once a month and we started doing all kinds of things together. Each one of those had a strength. We didn't have any more industrial land, for instance, whereas Kendall Township had a huge amount of land with utilities ready to go. So we were trying to get new industries into their area because obviously some of our people are going to work there. So it just made sense. So I would say that you would find me involved in one-on-one meetings with anybody and everybody that occupy positions of leadership in this community. I think the school board, downtown development authority, chamber of commerce, the realtors, the bankers, the -- those that make up the heart of the community, I would be spending a lot of time with. It's interesting. I spent a day here last week and just tried to get a sense of what this community is like. But I understand that you kind of got to pull the skin off and see what's underneath. There may be some surprises, but I don't think so. I think you have a very strong community, very attractive community, and it's one that would be a pleasure to serve.
Thank you.
Please describe your ideal working relationship with the elected officials, especially in terms of the roles each play and in communication.
Well, I worked for the city council. When I went there, our city charter called for all seven city council people to be elected at the same time. We did not have wards. They were all at large. And if you've got four people that had beef, that could run as a group, they could throw everybody out. In fact, when I took that position, there had been nine city managers in 11 years in Port Huron. It was the Siberia of the city management world, which was an attraction to me because I thought that would be an interesting place to be. I worked very, very close with the mayor and each one of the city council people, but probably closest with the mayor or deputy mayor. I did something going in that ended up being a good thing. There was a big disconnect between the city council and the former city manager. And there was a lot of games being played and a lot of not-so-nice things going on. And I wanted a transparent relationship with the city council. So the very first week that I was there, I ended the week by writing up a report, if you will, of who I met with and what I was doing and what issues we were facing. And I would send that up and I ended up doing that every Friday for six years. And it really solved the communication problem because I would get telephone questions back. This item here, where are you going with that? What are you going to be doing with that? And many times, I wanted to get some direction from the city council and from the leadership. And I'm very transparent, very open, and I have a very good relationship with the city council. In fact, I would give you all their names and telephone numbers and you could call them and I think they would all say that we got along well.
Thank you.
Please tell us about your skills and experience in developing and administering a budget and capital improvements.
I am not a CPA, but I know enough about finance to be dangerous. We were required to have a balanced budget each year. We were faced with, as I'm sure you were, property taxes dropped 11 percent. Income tax dropped 14 percent. Revenue sharing at the state level dropped five or six percent. And so we were working with a lot less revenue, but the city council really didn't want to cut services. So we had to figure out a way to bring that together. The way we did it was we streamlined city government. We used those that retired. We did not replace them unless we had to. During my time as city manager, we reduced the staff by 41 positions. We had a staff of 290. When I got there, it was about 250 when I left. And we were able to do everything that we had been doing with more money for less money. We brought a couple of departments together. We had department heads that retired. For instance, the fire chief retired. The police chief retired. And so I thought, well, this is a good time to talk about a combination of a public service department, which we did. And we hired an administrator who was a former chief of police of Eutica. And we were able to bring those two functions together in a very, very unique and special way. Parks and recreation and parks -- recreation and parks were separate departments. We brought them together. We had two department heads. One agreed to take a second position. And we began to, through attrition, reduce staffing. That's sometimes an answer, sometimes not. A lot of governments at this point in time are bare bones and are hurting. And the additional reductions would redevelop the city. So I think that has to be very carefully looked at. I prepared the budget every year and I worked for the public works department to prepare the capital improvements budget. We went -- I assume you're in the middle of budgeting. I think your last budget, I'm sure fiscal year, isn't it?
July 1st.
July 1st, yeah. I was the same. So I was doing the same thing you're doing at this point in time. I went through every department budget with every department head. And we talked about what we could do to strengthen the ability that department to operate, but for less money. And we were able to do that.
Please describe your management philosophy.
My management philosophy is to implement policies of the city council and be the face of the city council and the community. Interact with citizens. I like to reach out. We did things like coffee with the chief. We would meet at a restaurant once a week and people could come in and talk to myself and the chief of police. I did a little television program I called The City View. And I interviewed -- it was on every Tuesday. In fact, it's streamed, so if you're really interested in something to push you to sleep, you may want to look it up. But I tried to go do a cross-section. I looked at leaders, but I looked at ordinary people that were doing interesting things. And we did 15- to 20-minute interviews. And those became fairly popular. We had a newsletter at one time, but it became very expensive. We decided to use the Internet instead and did communication over the Internet. But I believe that department heads are hired because they're qualified to do the job. And I don't want to micromanage them. I want to know what's going on. I don't want any surprises. If there's issues, we need to know about them fast and figure out what to do about them. But my own style of management is open door and having the department heads do their job that they were hired to do.
What would be your top three priorities upon assuming the position?
Well, I was going to ask you what your top three issues were, but as I look at the community, I don't see -- I see a well-maintained community. I don't see the housing problems that we had in Port Huron. We had 70 percent of our housing stock was rentals. We had serious crime as a result of that. From an industrial standpoint, I know Mule Brass is here. That's a Port Huron company. In fact, one of the reasons I was told later that I was asked to be a full-time city manager was Mule Brass. So when I took the job as an interim, even for two months, I don't think it ought to be a time of rest. I went out and met with the top 10 employers in the city, the top 10 companies as far as taxes paid to the city. And one of those was Mule Brass. And President Mule Brass told the city council and mayor, we've been here for 85 years. We've never had a city manager call on us to see how we're doing. So as a result of that, apparently that had an impact and...
Please describe your experience in human resource management.
Human resource management, of course, we had a department head that handled that full-time. It's your responsibility or your responsibility? We took a lot of time hiring people. As I indicated, we were going the other direction. We were using attrition and retirement as a way to reduce the staff law. But I was always concerned that they did not have a staff manual. They did not have a process for advancement within departments. And so we worked on it. I did -- one of the people that retired while I was there was the human resource director. And the way I hire particularly department heads is I will advertise the position, but if there's anybody internally that should have a shot at it, I definitely interview that person. The person in that department was a very, very nice, talented person. I didn't know a lot of what she did because her boss was very, very good. So when we did the interviews, she knocked them dead. She was just fantastic. And so I hired her. I hired inside and outside. I try to hire the best person for the job, whoever that happens to be.
Please describe your experience in preparing staff reports for planning commissions and zoning boards of appeal.
Preparing what?
Preparing staff reports, like if they're going to have a meeting. Just describe your experience, or maybe that wasn't in your responsibilities.
I...
Now you were going.
Is it time to go?
He's going to start with a clean before the meeting's over.
I let the department heads handle their items before the city council. Otherwise, they would have to take time to make me familiar with the subject. There was always a lot of information that came up in the discussion, and I would have looked like an idiot. And so I basically allowed them to handle their own items before the city council. Sometimes they wrote reports. We always had them come to the podium and explain an issue, particularly if money was involved or if there was some policy that we needed to discuss. I became involved in the things that were not covered by department heads, economic development issues, incentives for development, those kinds of things. Things that we did as far as the staff was concerned in order to make it a nice place to work. We all have days when we really don't want to work and there are days that the staff needs a little break. So we tried to do some things internally with the staff. And I always kept the city council appraised with those things because those are the things that can blow up in your face real fast.
Did you ever, Mr. Brown, did you ever actually do a staff report for zoning board appeals or planning commission?
What's that?
Did you ever prepare a staff report for a zoning board appeals or a planning commission?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's what this -- I think that's what this question is. I know that's what this question is. If you could just answer that way.
I don't know who handles the planning responsibilities in the city.
The city manager.
Okay.
City manager. Wow. I have a master's degree in city planning, so...
Okay, all right.
That's very easy to do. And I would very definitely prepare background reports.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you feel that the day-to-day dynamics of the city and the residents are of importance to you? Or do you feel that focusing on projects and things like grant applications should be the priority?
I enjoyed a good relationship with the citizens of the community. We, as I indicated earlier, had some crime issues. We were 45 minutes from Detroit. It was a lot easier to come off I-94, sell your drugs, pop in your car, and go back. And so we had a serious story situation. And over the years, it was not really addressed. There was a lot of anxiety and frustration on the part of the citizens as related to city involvement in... city involvement in their neighborhoods. So we broke the community into eighteen districts. And I assigned a police officer in every one of the districts. And they had his visitor name, telephone number, email address and cellphone. And that person was in charge of maintaining order in those communities. And what happened was that opened a communication that had been dead for quite a while, where the community itself really did a lot of the policing because they kept their eyes and ears open and would report to us when there was something going on that looked a little bit weird. And so I've been to neighborhood meetings. I always attended neighborhood meetings. I attended anything that would help communicate from my office to the community. I found the biggest problem was that communication really is hard to do unless you do it consistently and unless you do it purposely. And so we began a communication process that is still in place today.
Please describe how you would deal with an angry or confrontational citizen. Please describe how you would deal with an angry or confrontational citizen that came into the office.
Face-to-face. I'm not into writing letters back and forth. I'm not into telephone calls if I can do it face-to-face. I would much rather, and I've done it many, many times in Port Huron and other cities, I'd much rather meet them where they feel comfortable or have them in my office and let's say, let's, what's the issue? And how do we solve this situation? And I had some that you could solve. There were some that the city had screwed up and had not done what they should do and were able to resolve that. Some of them weren't resolvable. But I always try to leave the meeting with an amiable confrontation. And I would say, you know what? I'm sorry, but there isn't much I can do about that. Here's this, here's the reason why. And, but I think they deserve an answer and I think they deserve a face-to-face answer.
Do you feel you can discern and understand the bottom line of a situation versus the political climate of the community?
Well, I think they're pretty related. Almost every issue in the city has got a political side to it. And I think the key is balancing the politics and the issue. I do, I do think that a lot of issues can be resolved before they get to be serious. And that's basically, if you hear about it, deal with it. And I've had department heads that have had real serious situations with citizens or organizations, and I bring them together, bring the department head in and say, alright, let's figure this, let's figure this out and let's get this resolved. So, but I do also understand that there are, you know, you're all getting elected every so often. And there are political things that will enter into a decision that's made by the city manager. I don't mean that it's my job to get you elected. I think it's my job to create a culture of honesty and professionalism that has the elected officials of this community you can feel comfortable with when you go out to, to campaign. So I, I don't, I don't dismiss the political side. It's definitely part of this job. It's part of what you are all about. But I would hope, I've had, I've had several issues that I've taken to the city council. And they said, you know what? We just don't think we ought to do that. I don't know if you're having any water rate issues, but water rates were the big thing on the east side of state of Michigan. And we, they did not want to raise water rates. Well, guess what? The water department and the water facilities were financed by bonds. And the bond required that the bond be paid for by revenues produced by the system. So if it's not producing enough revenues, there's got to be either an increase in the water rates or you're going to borrow from a fund somewhere temporarily. I suggested to them, and in many, in this instance, they agreed. We, we decided to do a multi-year, small increase for the city of Port Huron that would not be devastating from a political standpoint. My predecessor was fired because of water rates. He suggested a twenty percent increase. I did two and a half to three percent. And we were able to keep that alive. I don't know if you have been, if you have combined sewers, but we were ordered by the state to separate all of the combined sewers in our community. It's taken us fifteen years, we're just in the last year of this year, and it was a hundred and eighty-five million dollars on the back of the community. There was no help. So it certainly impacted our financial ability to do a lot of things that we used to do.
Why do you think you will be successful at this job?
Well, I think if you've read my resume, I think I've done everything that you can possibly do in life. I, I like to work. I have been a student of government for many, many years. And I think I'm well-qualified. And Port Huron is probably the best example. If you want to call, and I could give you a list of people to call. But I think you would find that I met the requirements that they had. And we were able to move the city to some pretty exciting things. There's a lot. Sixty-five million dollars worth of projects underway in the city as we speak. Just this week, they signed an agreement to build a hotel in downtown Port Huron with a developer that I started talking to five years ago. And it takes a long time. It's a relationship thing. It takes a lot of work to bring those kind of projects to the table. But I know how to do that. And I know how to run government. I know how to do a lot of things. So that's why I think I would be terrific.
How would you want to be measured on your job performance?
Job performance? I think the proof is in the pudding. I think Port Huron saw something in the first two months that they liked. And then they extended for another year and a half, and then another year, another year and a half. And I think they were satisfied with the progress we're making. And I do believe that if at any point there's a, there's an issue of, of, between the city council and the city manager, I would much rather say sayonara. I know city managers who, who have sued the city council, who have bad, bad-talked the community. I think that's really a stupid thing to do. And so as long as I am performing the way you want me to perform, then we'll be fine. If it changes, then let me know and I will add that to wherever.
Do you feel that upholding zoning and other ordinances are important? And how have you dealt with this issue in the past?
Well, I think, I, I hear a lot of stuff from citizens about individual rights and property rights, et cetera, et cetera. There are some rights that have to be reserved for the city. And I think zoning and planning and some of those kind of activities that do seem to impinge on private property rights are necessary in order to maintain order and some semblance of governmental excellence. So I, I enforce ordinances. I feel strongly that if there's something wrong with the ordinance, change the ordinance. But these usually come from a, many years of experience. And they are usually catered to what you are trying to accomplish as a city. And so I, you would find me very pro enforcement.
And I think you've probably covered this question, but you may have something extra to add. What do you consider to be your most significant professional accomplishment?
Wow. I think the White River Park was probably the flashiest thing I'd ever done. We bought two-hundred-and-fifty-six acres of land in downtown Indianapolis, cleared it, and hired a design team of internationally-known designers and created a very special place. That was pretty exciting, but, but we had a lot of money. The Land Management was very dedicated to it. The city and the state both put a lot of money up. And so we were able to do things like build stadiums and build art galleries and parks. And we built a zoo. We built sports facilities. And so that was, I got a big flash. One of the things I did there, by the way, was I put together a group called the City Committee. And only those of us who were on it knew who we were. But there were about twenty-five people that could make things happen, had an ability to connect with money, politics, sports figures, whatever. And we operated below the radar. Nobody knew who we were or that we were even operating. But we did things like, we met with Bob Ursay of the Baltimore Colts in an airport in Denver and moved the Baltimore Colts to Colts, to Indianapolis. You never, when that was announced, you never heard the city committee's name. We did it because we were trying to move the city forward. And we did not do it for credit. The minute that you've got to have credit for things, then that changes the ballgame. So when we had something like that happen, it was the mayor and the governor that made the announcement. I would say Port Huron, the Port Huron experience was probably one of the most significant. It was a city that was in really, really serious trouble. They had no development going. They had, they were really down on themselves. They didn't think the city amounted to much. It's an international city. In fact, the second busiest international gateway on the northern border of the United States. Canadians from Sardinia and London, et cetera, spent two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars a year in Port Huron. They would come over for gas, they'd come over for food, they'd come over for entertainment. And yet, Port Huron couldn't seem to figure out that that was a cool thing. So I think that the combination of the economic development, the putting together a leadership structure that would supersede individuals was very, very important. And that's still going at this point.
The very last question is, is there anything that you would like to add to the discussion? Or do you have any questions for us?
Well, I realize that a lot of what I would be interested in, and I've written a couple of pages of things, what'll happen when you're on the job and you start asking questions and you start getting below the surface. I would be interested in what the top two issues that you see. I know finances has got to be one. That's, that's an issue in every community that I'm aware of that's been involved with. What are you going to do as far as long-term development is concerned? You can't continue to borrow from the general fund that outs of us. So I assume that's one, maybe that isn't. But I would say I would be very interested in what you would see as a couple of things you would really like to get your arms around and say, go, go get that done.
Go ahead, Danny.
Although we've got quite a representative here in town, you're talking about businesses in town. We have one of the larger ones sitting right over your left shoulder, Dan Blunt, who's like heavy. He's very successful in town and have a really good operation by a few employees up there. And some of the other ones here in town are represented, Cooper Refrigeration, Bob Jayway Construction. Great for us out there from nature's needs. So we, you know, we have a number of people in town that are interested in what's happening in the city. But we do have, as one of my things would be community relations that I think we have to vastly improve on. It's been a problem in transparency. I don't think that's been happening as well as it should. Downtown Development Authority, we've been in the process of redistricting. I don't know if you've read anything about the electoral ex-property over here. That was part of the DDA area zone, or however you want to say it. And of course, with that removal of that building, it cost the DDA deary and that. So they've been trying to work on a redistricting to get back a positive cash flow, so to speak. And if you've been in the town, the mall is pretty limited of what's actually in there and usable. Plus, there's some other commercial area on Forty-four, the subway. Although one of those buildings had just recently been taken over by one of the doctors in town, except that left his old building empty now, so...
Yeah.
Retail and industrial I see as two big things we need to do in town. Building all of the tax rates around eighteen mils, seven?
Yes, eighteen.
Tax-wise for the average resident is, I shouldn't say rate, but the fees, taxes paid for similar housing is quite a bit more than what it is in surrounding more affluent communities. To me, that's because we don't have enough industry or businesses. I've been in business myself for many years. I sold out a few years ago and still manage the department store. But ultimately, the businesses and the industry pay the taxes. Unless you can get them coming in, the taxes for the residential properties are going to be higher. I guess those are some of the concerns that I had. But community relations is probably number one.
Thank you, Tom. Jess?
I'll, excuse me. I'll echo a lot of what Mr. Jones said. Community relations is a huge issue. I think we need to bridge that not only with our businesses but our citizens so we can work together to build, develop, better development. I think there needs to be some, a degree of synergy between our business district and our city where those businesses... where those businesses have an opportunity to expand in our community, have an opportunity to do business within our city and for our city. I think internally in the media, we had a few issues. Mr. Jones kind of elaborated on it. I think one was transparency. I think that's really did some FOIA issues and how we handle FOIA. I think another thing is, is with our boards, and our various boards within the city, sometimes there's some confusion on those and the direction they're going. I think that could be, we can get more of a unified front in terms of where we're trying to move our city forward with all those boards.
Thank you, Jess.
You've got neighborhoods in Port Huron that are bigger than development, okay? Port Huron was in drastic shape. I haven't been over there since I did all, but I've seen pictures of it, looked at the stuff. But I remember going over there and I was driving a truck. It was just drastic. It was just terrible. We do need, we do need to develop some kind of a way to get some other industry or businesses in here. We have people that need work, just like everybody else does. You know, our infrastructure's suffering in some areas and stuff. And it is just because they don't have the tax base. But we can't put any more burden on the citizens because, you know, we're overdoing it now. We have, you know, the mall, yeah, that's, that was a bad plan right from the get-go in '73. But their downtown area is really suffering the most because of what's happened over here. You know, and the DEQ did nothing, absolutely nothing. You know, we know there's contaminants over there, something, nothing's being taken care of. But we've got the M44 corridor. I mean, basically, that's where our business district is at now, like it is with most towns. It's all in the, and we do have the empty buildings out there. We've got room for more businesses. We just need to figure out a way to market the city to generate more people being interested in it. Because we had 178 empty houses or something a year ago. We got a few of them filled out, filled in now.
Got a few of them, yeah.
Yeah. But still, you know, we need the houses filled. We need people in town. The school system has shrunk. You know, everything around here has shrunk. And we need to do something to generate.
Is there anybody in the city structure that's out working the fields, if you will? Economic development, downtown development? I could sense the downtown struggling a little bit. It needs some identity. It needs some forum. It needs some tenants. But we don't have anybody that's out there working for new, on new tenants or new industries or anything like that.
No. I think it was, it was around about three years ago, was it the city and the DDA did some videos.
Yeah, they did some marketing videos.
They did some marketing about three, four years ago, but then it just kinda didn't carry on. And I don't know why. I've only been on the council two years now. Actually, Ron and Mike have been on the longest. Dennis just came on and jury-penaled when Ron was re-elected. I was appointed because of the vacancy. It's kind of our background up here. But like I said, about three, four years ago, they did some videos. But whether you see drop the wall or lost focus?
It's easy. It takes time. I mean, one of the things that people seem to think is, to bring someone in like myself who has had economic development experience, and I've got a whole file at home of industries that I can plug into whatever. As I said, the city flats hotel is just a building in downtown Port Huron. I started negotiating with them five years ago. And there's not a lot that cities can do from a tax standpoint from a commercial and industrial side. You can't do a lot of tax giveaways, but there are things you can do. I mean, there are utilities. We did surveys. We did environmental surveys. We did a number of things within the context of what we do that would help the developer. And in many instances, it doesn't take much for a developer to think. I'll give you a good example. We have an organization called the Pilots, Great Lakes Pilots Association. There's Port Huron sits at the base of Lake Huron. And then there's the St. Clair River, Lake St. Clair, Detroit River, Ontario, and all the way out. All these great, gigantic freighters come through. And if they are foreign registered freighters, they have to have an American pilot take them through the Great Lakes. So there were three pilot associations on that whole route. One was in Quebec. One was in the Wellman Canal. The other one was Port Huron. And they had a stock of pilots that, as these ships would enter the Port Huron waters, they would run these guys out and haul them off the side of the boat and drop them off on the way back. Well, that group was, had a headquarters that was really inadequate. And they decided they were gonna build a new headquarters. They got a real push from Sarnia, which is across the river. We had 30,000 population, Sarnia had 70. And they were, they were that close to making a deal with Sarnia to putting their headquarters there. So I sat down with them and I said, what would it take to keep you in Port Huron? We need to build you a building. What do we need to do? He said, well, he said, you know, the architectural plans are kind of expensive. And we'd like some help with that. And I said, how much is it? He said, it's $9,000. I said, I'll split it with you if you'll stay here. He said, okay. So for $4,500, we kept the organization in our community. And that is basically kind of what I'm talking about. Because I meant to be somebody shaking the bushes and in a position that can make those kind of deals on the spot. If I had to come back to the city council and get approval for every one of those. I always told the city council sometimes afterwards. But if they worked, and they worked, we never did get bitten. So it was a good process. But there needs to be somebody that, somebody smelling around in the city that calls, sat down with them and said, what do we gotta do to get you in our community?
Jury Jim?
Yeah, I think I'll just sort of what Mike was saying, that we have a lot of traffic that comes through M44 and M91, two major roads that just outside the city. Actually, M44 is, but I think attracting people with the amount of traffic we get on those roads getting them this direction. And I think that's a major concern is what, where are you gonna get people down this road? There's so much traffic going down those roads. I wanna see them from this direction. I think another major issue we're gonna be having here is the, of course, the electoral ex-property. That would be mentioned, that's gonna be a major issue here in the near future. And I think that everybody else has too. And communication with residents and businesses are absolutely nothing plus.
I can pretty much echo what everybody said here. We have, we need to build trust. We need to build trust between the community with the residents. Industry, we need business owners. We need, we need the mall. We need something in there to bring the people, to bring the revenues back in. We need to build this town back up. And I think really, that's, you know, that's an important thing. But I think the main word is trust right now.
Well, you are the home and it's doable. It takes time, but it's certainly doable.
Good.
The only other question I would have, you talked about, at this point, we're talking interim city manager. Do you have a timeframe, time limit you would wanna do this?
As long as I am healthy and I have my mental capabilities and I remain as good-looking as I am, I don't have time. I wrote a book a couple of weeks ago called Refire, Don't Retire. And it kind of charged me up a bit. As I indicated, I've got several communities that are kind of smelling around to see if I might do some consulting. I would focus here. I think in Port Huron, I started, for the two months, I started, I went over Monday morning and came home Wednesday night or first night or something like that. But I think for a while, and I don't have any, I don't have any time limit as far as whatever that while is. There needs to be a pretty concentrated effort at trying to understand what's happening here and where you need to go to turn it.